Okay, we'll call meeting to order. Roll call.
Okay, Mayor Wester.
Yep.
Holtman.
Yep.
Cleveland.
Yep.
Reese. Thank you.
Yes. No.
(laughing).
Substitute.
Okay, consent agenda, we need to remove the...
Yeah, that fence permit is not approved, so you should remove that.
Okay, I've motioned to approve consent agenda with that addition.
I'll make that a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Holtman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay, Chloe's gonna tell us about hometown pride program.
Um, so, I don't know if anyone needs updating on it or not, if you don't need to.
We've all heard it, haven't we?
We've talked about it, okay. Well, anyway, you're the last and final town, so it's all on you. Um, I just go back from Shaler and presented them, so far right now, the Supervisors is putting in a chunk of money, and so is SETD towards the 20,000 that the county has to put forth every year for the next five years, if we choose to go for five years. And then we are asking each community for $1 per capita at this time, which would go towards the 80,000 a year, which the state puts in 60,000, or Keep Out Beautiful puts in 60,000 for the coach, as well as all of the materials that come with it every year. So, yeah.
So, what's $1 per capita?
$1,142 per year.
Yes.
Will that continue to be the same for all five years? Are they talking?
No. So, right now, the Supervisors have committed $10,000 for three years. At that time, I'm hoping also to see funding from other places as well, whether it's private or public. Pocahontas has seen a lot of funding come forward throughout the years. Also, it'd just be like utilities, too. They have grants out there that you can apply for, that they'll contribute for stuff like this as well. So...
So, what happens if one of the towns just decides to pull out after? Will that, will it continue on then?
Yes, so what will happen now, if this does go all the way through, is each mayor from each community, as well as the Supervisors and SETD, will sign an agreement. And in there, it will, I think it states like, for five years, but then it's reevaluated every year, so then, you know, everyone is on the same page. So, yeah, I mean, once that agreement is signed, I mean, everyone's committed to it.
What kind of increase have they had, these other communities when they start up? Is it a 10% increase in cost, or is it just, you know, from one year to the next? You know, you're talking?
Right now, it's just talking, it's keeping, are you talking about like...
Each town, like, we're putting up $1,143.
Right.
Next year, what, will it still be 11?
Yeah, it's the same as of now, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
But these other communities, have they, has that pattern stayed the same?
Yep, mhm, yes.
Okay.
Everyone stayed the same, I guess that's what I've gotten from everyone.
Okay.
So, everyone is basically making at least this per capita commitment for three years, and then as you read, the dollar figures are reevaluated in year four?
Right, I'm guessing we'll have to reevaluate at that time. I'm guessing that's how everyone's kinda seeing it, as that's how the Supervisors made their commitment, is everyone's kinda looking at that three-year, which I'm hoping after that, it might even be less for each town, you know, but those two final years.
Do we have any questions for Chloe?
Yeah, is this competitive now? Do, are we putting into a program that we're competitive against other counties yet, or are we gonna be accepted for sure?
No, we will be accepted for sure. I've been talking to Jerry from Keep Out Beautiful, and he wanted to know how the progress was going and everything, and so, he said, if everyone agrees, then we have funding for you guys, so you, everyone's on board.
Very good.
So, yeah, I'll just keep in contact with him, and...
So, do we have any choice, who's gonna coach us, or they just assign somebody?
Okay, so, if this does get voted, then, then you, it can be someone from your council, or it can be someone that you guys choose, is, then we want, we're gonna have a steering committee who will be in charge of finding that coach, which Jerry from the Keep Out Beautiful and their team will also help, but the steering committee will be the most involved with it. We're hoping to have someone from each community, and then there'll be someone from the Supervisors as well that serve on it.
Okay.
So, that'd be like the first step after this, is trying to find that, or finding that person that you would like to represent Lakeview. And then, you have a committee then, that represents Lakeview, that your coach would visit every month, and they would come to you, so...
So, where do we put the committee together, our local group, or city of Lakeview?
Mhm, yep.
And don't necessarily have to be the council, though, it could be...
Oh, no, 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 right, yeah, because...
Members are the other...
Yeah, I mean, there's people on your council, but you won't want it to be, you know, maybe you just want it to be the council, but I'm guessing...
The idea really is to do what you can to spur involvement by lots of different people in the community.
Right, yeah.
And Pocahontas has seen, you know, there are people coming to their committee meetings more and more, you know, rather than just starting out with nine and doing a link down to like five or three, they're seeing, you know, because they're seeing involvement increase all the time, because they're actually seeing stuff happening, you know, from year to year, so...
It's a win for Lakeview and the county.
Mhm.
Do we have a motion to join this?
Make that a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Do you wanna clarify a little bit?
Two years.
What's the motion then, why is to...
To accept the proposal of $1 per capita, make the three-year commitment.
Three years?
Like everybody, everybody else made a three-year commitment, right?
Um, well, for voting, SOT's just made a three-year commitment, but I think, I, we can probably, we'll probably put in the agreement, I'd call it at that point, three-year commitment for $1 per capita to be revisited after that year.
Good with that one?
Do that, that the city would participate, committing $1 per capita for three years to be revisited in year four.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Holtman.
Yes.
Reese.
Thank you, Chloe.
Thank you. So, yeah, hopefully, just get this thing started. I'll email Jerry, and then we can get our steering committee meeting, and start looking for a coach, and get this thing going, then.
You got any rough timeline about how long this takes to get rolling? When do we need our steering committee member?
Um, well, I, we'll probably email Jerry tomorrow, and then I'm guessing he'll get right back to me, and, you know, sometime December, maybe meet. Now, December's kind of a busy month with the holidays and everything, so I guess just kinda see what works for everyone, the person meet, that way we can, and maybe Jerry will have an idea, too, what would be the best, I don't know.
Somebody from Keep Out Beautiful comes to our first steering committee meeting?
I'm guessing, yeah, they'll come, that way they just give you an idea of what you need to be looking for as a coach, where to get started, all those things.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, we have to do an urban report?
Yes. Just, I wanna point out a few things to you, because this is a state requirement that we do this annual report. Page four, this is going, bottom number on page four, it talks about the year-end outstanding obligations for TIF, and it says we have $1,052,000 of obligations of TIF. Okay, let me tell you that our TIF obligations are nowhere close to that much. Okay? But it's because, when you look at, say, on page six, these are the types of obligations that we have, and we've repaid them from TIF, that we had an internal debt issuance for Streetscape that's since been paid off, that was the last payment last year, Boulders Infrastructure, total, including interest, $487,000, Sack Beach, total, including interest of $206,000, and then Camp Crescent improvements, which, again, we haven't spent any of that yet, but it's potentially $400,000. That's where that number comes from, about $1 million, okay? Having said that, especially with Boulders and the Sack Beach infrastructure, the amount on this page is the total debt, and the amount that's paid from TIF is significantly less. It's like the Sack Beach is paid primarily by that special assessment from Boulders, and the Boulders infrastructure, a lot of that's paid by hotel motel tax. So, when you look at page seven, this is actually the amount that we paid this past year for, out of our TIF funds for this, that for the Boulders Infrastructure project, we paid $4,026,000, for the Sack Beach infrastructure, we paid $3,000, and then for the Streetscape, $81,370. Those are the amounts that we've actually paid, so, the report's confusing, because it looks at total debt that's out there, but the amount that's actually paid from TIF's quite a bit less. But, this is one of those that, one of those reports that the council needs to approve before I can submit it, and on page eight is a resolution to approve that report, and I'd gladly answer any questions.
Looks like no questions. Okay, do you have a motion on 1437 to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Holtman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, our health insurance went up?
Health insurance went up.
Can we keep our own doctors?
Yeah, you can, you can keep...
Keep your doctor if you like it?
If you like the plan, you can keep the plan, if you like your doctor, you can keep your doctor, it's on page nine. The left side of the box shows what our premiums are currently, and then the right side of the box shows you what the renewal rates are.
Last year, they didn't go up at all.
Nope, and, actually, before...
It did go down.
Before we take a look at that, you can look at page 11, that's our 10-year history on this. And, so, yeah, last year, they went down a little bit, but what I've done in that far-right column, you just track the percentage increase over the last 10 years, and for the last nine years, it stayed pretty much consistent. Now, it fluctuates up and down quite a bit, but...
So, we pay all that, right? For family?
Okay, not for payment, for, we pay 100% of a single policy.
Okay.
We pay 75% of the additional cost for dependents.
Okay.
Okay. So, I guess my point here is that over the last 10 years, including this proposed renewal, it's gone up 12.9%. Over 10 years, pretty fair.
Yeah.
But, just understanding that that's subject to some huge fluctuations up and down, and some of that's been due to our demographics, in that we've had several retirements, and replacing with younger people, and that has a lot to do with it. But, now if we can flip back to page nine, just wanna go down, just the brief description of our, of our policy. The deductible's $2,000, $4,000, so that's $2,000 for a single, $4,000 for family, just that the family's gotta meet the deductible twice. Co-insurance, 20% in-network, 30% out of-network. It's the Wellmark network, and it virtually includes anybody. There's a handful of doctors in the state that aren't included, so it's almost all-inclusive. OPM is out-of-pocket maximum, $4,000 for a single, or $8,000 for, for family. Preventative, yes, that's covered. OV, co-pay is office visit, it's $20 co-pay if somebody goes to the doctor's office. The emergency co-pay is $150, and then you see what the prescription card is. Eight for generic, 35 for everything on the formulary list, or $50 for anything that's not on the formulary list. And, a huge percentage of what we see rolled through is generics. Some people have really gotten the notion that you can save a lot of money if they just use generics. Now, so this is the policy we buy, remember that the benefits that the employee sees are significantly less, they see a $500 deductible, and a $1,000 out-of-pocket, and then the city partial self-funds that difference. Okay? So, the employees' benefits are stipulated in our collective bargaining agreement and our personnel policy, those are stated in there, but the type of policy that we buy still remains up to the city. Now, this policy that we buy, and have had this same policy for several years, now with Obamacare coming in, we had the chance to grandfather our plan. Okay? So, when you grandfather the plan, it needs to be substantially in compliance with what Obamacare requires, but some things that it may not cover completely, like some of the stuff on preventative care, okay? But, in general, it's a pretty solid plan. But, this is still considered to be a grandfathered plan, which is an important distinction, then, because they can rate you still individually. They still gotta accept you, they gotta accept everybody within the group, okay? But you're still rated individually. If you go to an ACA-compliant plan, those are only rated on three things, and it's rated on age, within certain age bands, the location of where you, of where you happen to live, and whether you're a smoker. Those are the only things that impact rates for ACA-compliant plans. And, the, our Wellmark salesman is telling us that those ACA-compliant plans are running about 50% higher than what we pay now, so, we are certainly best served to do what we can to retain our grandfather. Okay? So, if we, if we re-up the same, the same plan, we have no concerns about the grandfather. You can't really change benefits and how they're allocated between the employee and the employer, and still retain that grandfather, so... Long story short on this, the plan proposes to go up 13.84%, and if you look at page 10, you can't add these up to come up to 13.84%, they just don't add up that way, but base rate for everybody in a small employer pool was 6%. Everyone went up 6%, and then you can see how things change based upon the risk level and demographics are two biggest ones. So, everybody got basically a year older, we didn't replace anybody with younger employees this time, and then risk level, we had two large claims this year, and our past history's been that we've had one large claim, so... The renewal date of this is January 1st, and we would need to renew it absolutely by the 15th of December.
Obama Affordable Care Act.
Well, I talked to Mike Norris about that. The city's, what, $9,000 to him, and Obamacare was gonna cost him $13,000.
That's what I'm saying, explain that to me.
You gotta pay for the people that don't wanna work.
That's, oh, really?
So, like, Mike Norris, he can, he's part-time, but he can get...
Only, only because he is a city retiree.
Okay.
We have two people, we have Mike and Jack, who are still on our, on our policy, they pay 100% of their premium.
Oh, okay.
They pay all their premium.
That's where he ends up, it's cool, too.
But, and it's, it's a public employer thing, that if you retired from the, from the public employer in Iowa, you're entitled to stay on their health insurance plan at your own expense, but you can stay on the health insurance plan until you're Medicare-eligible. That's a state law.
I don't like getting older, but I like Medicare.
So, having them on, being older like that, that affects our rate, too?
It costs us, yeah.
That ain't true.
It does.
That's what our, like I said, more guy, people have, retire, they're older, still...
So, what action do we need to do now?
If we could renew the health insurance policy, I think that's in the city's best interest to do that.
I'll make a motion to renew the health insurance policy.
You're second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay, Holtman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna do the engineering services for the wastewater treatment plant?
This is for Wardenville, right?
Yeah. I know Lon's got lots of things that he wants to discuss, kinda on the plant end of things, there's a few things that I wanna highlight on the contract end of things, before we get into that too much. So, just, I guess the first thing to know is that Aaron and I had gotten together and reviewed this, reviewed the contract, had a handful of changes for Bob Beanstra, Bob has incorporated those into this draft already. So, any, any changes that we had right off the, off the get-go have already been incorporated in this, this is the second draft. So, important, important parts of this, first of all, we start on page 13, as it describes the scope of the project, and this would propose that there's two phases, and we've talked about that before, with phase one coming quickly on the disinfection, and phase two involving the physical, bigger physical improvements to the, to the plant. I wanna take a look at that phase two, where he talks about that Influent pump station. Some of these things, a lot of these things, actually, are very much up in the air about whether we would do them or not. They're still included in the, in the engineering contract, because either they need to be analyzed, or there's, there's a strong chance that we would do them. Now, this Influent pump station, that is something that we would strongly analyze before we would, would want to get into something like that. And, point two, being renovations or replacement of grit removal. We have a grit removal system down there now, it just doesn't work properly, and we would have lots of exploration on that, including some basic things, like Lon had mentioned about just having a wide spot in the pipe, you can actually physically drive a skid loader down there, clean out the grit. Item three, new primary clarifiers or renovation of the existing primary. So, again, this, for contractual reasons, this is given the city options yet about what we would still do, explore the renovation, or look at new ones. Modification of the trickling filter pump station, and that pump station, it changes it into a series station, or it says it can still operate in parallel. Five is minor structural improvements to the south media filter, and we certainly need to be doing that. And then, six, a new artificial media filter to replace the north trickling filter, and that, that is, will end up being a must-do on that, too. Overall renovation of the digester, again, that's gonna end up being something that physically needs to be done, and that'll have to happen. Abandonment of what he calls this existing tankage, there's a bunch of stuff buried out there, and it's in our best interest to get that removed. Some of the old, original plants are still, are still buried there, so, we may very well want to get that out of there, and Lon will talk about that. And then, a little catch-all there on number nine with minor improvements. But it's, it's just important, these next couple, couple points, that the scope and extent of the plant improvements are generally identified in that plan that he reviewed last time, okay? And the scope and extent of the improvements may be modified during the project by mutual written agreement of both the parties. So, that was one of the changes that Aaron wanted in there, that we would have written agreement about always defining what the scope of the project is.
Didn't we have a little problem with the last thing, with some changes that wasn't written up?
I'm not sure with him, but there were, there were some work orders that...
Now, you're talking on the last renovation? Say it again.
I thought we were, at one...
It was as-built, or...
Oh, we never got any as-built plans.
Yeah.
We don't have any. We don't know where anything's at, sitting down there right now.
So, is that something we need on this new project, or...
It, it states that in the contract, that they're being added, built set of plans.
Okay, okay.
One thing I'm seeing that is missing, if you go to phase one, he's got affluent, uh, no, relocation of affluent sampler, that's number three on phase one. The Influent one needs to be moved, too. That should be done on the, on the phase one, because if we don't decide to do phase two, that we need to have moved, because it freezes up everywhere. So, it needs really a building to put around it, probably, and that's something I missed, have to catch it now, so...
So relocate that also?
Yeah.
And then, as we continue down, down the contract, it's gonna start talking about what they do, including the surveying conferences, and then forest plans and specs. Number five is geotechnical investigation, that's saying if there is the need for site borings, if there's the need for any ground exploration, that is going to end up being on the city's dime, okay? The city pays for all of that stuff directly, which is commonplace, you know, the city would end up doing.
And, I don't, was that ever done on the last project?
On...
Because we should have the data for this.
I don't believe so. That, that was one of the problems, about why they didn't even know that M-Hoff tank was there.
Yeah.
Because they didn't do any borings.
Yeah.
So... Taking that, what'd he say, that tank out that's buried?
There's several pieces out there.
How big a project would that be, do you think?
Did he say $60,000?
He said $60,000.
I think is what I remember reading. You know, the last time, when we found the M-Hoff tank, Jack and I and Jeff went down there, and we jackhammered it out on a weekend so they could start, and it was, we rented an excavator with a big jackhammer, and, I mean, that's something the city could do, and, I mean, that we could do anytime, you know? I think we're the new proposal of the, the new trickling filter, and that's gonna be on the green page in front of you. There is, and I'm not sure about that, but it's, the old drying bed is right there, and I think it was just buried and not taken out, if I remember right.
Wonder if they'll get by with that?
Well, they just put dirt over top of it, and it's basically just cement walls, and they're probably only three foot deep.
Oh.
And so, I mean, if we had an excavator, we'd probably rip that off ourselves, or at least do some exploratory digging to see if they are still there. And there'll be some piping in the ground that would, that came from the digester. Now, I don't know if they cut or capped it, because we don't have any as-built plans, so, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a big thing on this next project, is they're gonna hit things that we can't tell them that are there, and how much more is that gonna cost us on top of it, because they're gonna, it's gonna be a change order.
That's, that's...
And, and without an as-built set of plans, guys, it's, it's just a guessing game when they start digging what they're gonna hit. You know, when we put the, put them samplers in here last year, we done that ourselves, and we hit wires everywhere, and we're thinking, okay, we had to keep getting electricians out here, can you tell if these are good or not? Nobody knows. So, we just walk around and make sure everything's working, and...
Keep digging, huh?
Keep digging, that's what we did. So...
I guess, due diligence on, if we were to find the cost, and I guess, it makes sense to go do some exploratory digging, that you could get an idea?
I think probably, and if they put this trickling filter in, which we know we're gonna have to do that.
Right.
And Bob should know that they're gonna have to have well points put down in, because they did last time when they put the clarifiers, and we're only talking 30 feet away from them, and they'll have to put sand points down and pump. And, so, when you do the contract, they should know that that's gonna be, they're gonna have to do that, so when it's bid, that it ain't a big change order to cost three times what it should cost.
Right, that's, yeah, that's why I'm saying, is there any way we could do some preventive maintenance when it comes for the bid, is what I'm trying to say, having you guys dig spots, and we...
Well, and I don't know the digging spots, because we know we're gonna hit water, because they're gonna put this new trickling filter deeper than the old trickling filters, so we know we're gonna hit water. And, it won't be as deep as the clarifier, though, the final clarifier, so, Bob would, what we would probably need from Bob, then, is some elevations, and then I dig down to that elevation. You know, we just go down to that elevation, and we could, if we rent an excavator to take out the, the old secondary, possibly the old drying bed that's probably still there, there's another drying bed, there's another building that should be tore down. That building's flooded, it's been flooded for 14 years. You can't go in the basement, it's full of water, it's, it's just sitting there. I mean, because they never tore it out, it's abandoned. So, we really use the upstairs part... So we really use the upstairs part of the storage, we put pumps and stuff like that in there.
Saved a walk in there, huh?
That's where all the mosquitoes...
You know, it is what it is, I mean, we know it, you know? It's a spiral staircase, so it ain't like you could fall down the staircase. But it, it, that stuff we could do ourselves and probably save. It, it's still gonna cost you ten to fifteen thousand to remove, you know?
Oh, yeah, we could haul that out, uh...
We can take, it's all concrete, so it could go out to the dump, or we could go way to the back and dig a hole and push it back there, you know?
What are they ever gonna do with all that cement out there?
Just keep pushing it over.
What happens when that hole's full?
They stop, we'll be dead.
Yeah.
And we'll make any difference.
I don't, I don't have a good answer for that, Derek.
No. It's actually filling up faster than you think it is, guys, I mean...
It's filled up a lot since I've been here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, a bunch.
Taking a look at some of the contract things, again, I want to point out number eight, that the engineer assists with everything on the SRF requirements. That's the State Revolving Fund. That's, that would be the finance mechanism of how, how everything would be financed, and the engineer works through everything with us on that. That's actually, uh, something that we need to attend to here pretty, pretty quickly. We're gonna talk about this contract, and I'm not gonna ask you for a, a vote to approve the contract. I know there'll be a change or two. We'll get those changes put in, and then it'll come back to the council at the next meeting. But at that time, we should probably be approving that and, and this SRF application. The application will be for, for this design loan. That's the zero percent interest loan for paying any of the upfront design fees. And then that design loan is then rolled into the big loan whenever we take that out. The other things that the engineers are kind of, what they do is just general engineering stuff. Advertising for bids, preparing cost, cost of plans and specs, awarding the contract. Thirteen talks about their resident review services. And this would propose that we would have a part-time onsite inspector. And again, that's, that's just paid per hourly basis, but they're onsite, just assuring that the contractor's installing things according to the plan and specs.
Now would that be on phase one also, or, okay? And will they limit that, will you guys limit that to amount of hours?
This limits to a maximum dollar.
Is there any way in that project you can say, we want you to come inspect today, like before or four? You know, we don't even expect it or to tell them how, sit there and watch them perform together. You know, can we say, can the city be more involved in it and say, alright, we want you here today?
Yes, and can, can we, we have done that before. To keep them well informed of what's happening out there, because they'll tell you they wanna be here on the days when they pour. And then we keep them in, keep them informed of what's going on and make sure that they're here during those times.
So we could turn, we could determine the timing issues when we'd want them here, when they don't have to be here?
Yes.
So we ran into that problem when we did the streetscape project out here on Main Street that they came back, well, we can't have your inspector, he's here too much, you know, and you're getting close to your dollar amount. Well then, when we really needed him here, he wasn't here, you know?
So we could, what you're saying, we, we need to control the workflow?
I think so, to a certain extent, to a certain extent. I mean, there's nothing wrong when the site's prepared, if they dig the hole, have the engineer come up and say, I want soil samples taken that day before they can pour their footies. Then when they get ready and get their walls, then we want them to come that day. You know, but he doesn't need to be here every day watching them dig and stuff.
Good question to ask.
It's a good thing to tell them.
Well, I think, yeah, I think you want to tell them that, because otherwise it just keeps costing us more and more and more.
Uh, taking a look at the compensation, that's item number sixteen. And this was the, actually the main change that, uh, that we had made talking with, with Aaron. The original contract here said that, that the cost would be two hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars for the, for the project design, and that was lump sum cost. And that was very concerning, because we may very well scale back the project. We're not gonna pay a lump sum cost on that. So this is changed now to where the fee's the same, two sixty-three five, but it is hourly fee with a maximum not to exceed amount. Okay, so as the project gets scaled back, it's still only on an hourly fee.
Now, when they create this hourly fee that you're talking about, do they send you a report every month, or, or is it just at the end of the project, here's the hours or else?
It's billed every month.
It's billed every month, okay.
And then same thing, uh, on the construction services, that's, this is the inspection, that this is proposing two hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars of, of, uh, construction services. And again, that is hourly with a not to exceed amount. But when we would apply for this SRF for the, for the engineering fees, we put in the maximum amount, because that loan again is only a drawdown. You only draw down the funds as you need to pay them. Item C was something that, that needed quite a bit of explanation. Uh, Aaron talked about that quite a bit, of, and this is what happens after, after the contract completion date. When they're talking about work to be done after the contract completion date, that is the construction contract completion date. So we, we work with our engineer to, to set up what we think would be the allowable time for construction. And this is just covering the engineer and the fact that if you get a, uh, a contractor who's really dragging their feet and just not getting things done, you know, if they miss their completion date, the engineer's entitled to more compensation. Okay? The city's entitled to compensation on the other side through liquidated damages. But, um, this is just putting us on notice that if it's past the completion date, they would come ask for additional compensation.
Would that be in this, to not exceed though?
Pardon me?
Would that be part of this not to exceed two sixty?
No, if it's outside the contract time period, it could exceed that.
What typically is the law, how long a time period do you have?
The last one took them a little over a year, wasn't it?
I think they were talking eighteen months on that.
Where's the clause in here that if they screw it up and it doesn't work right, we don't get cut back on the funds?
There's some legal, legalese in there that we defer to our attorney, but Aaron's reviewed the indemnification, all the insurance parts, they're in there.
Because the last time we built the sewer plant, didn't it ever worked? I'm assuming we probably got hosed. Twenty years ago, we paid them the whole thing and it still didn't work?
Cure and foul, had to pay a little bit, didn't they?
Took, that took a long time.
A little bit, but...
Yeah, that was...
Twenty-five thousand dollars, yeah.
The flow of shit doesn't go.
Yeah, that had to do with something with the piping and...
The flow, didn't have any flow.
That's where, that's where, and that's worth the money that we, I think that's where the first one came on the council there. That was one of the things that we had, because we're getting a flow through, so we had to...
Redo it.
Redo it, and we went after the contractor, I don't think we got over thirty or forty.
We got twenty-five thousand left.
Okay, I was thinking thirty is what I was thinking, so...
Page eighteen talks about a lot of that legalese stuff on the indemnification and insurance.
You know, Scott, what we might do though, if, if the contractor, for example, is, I'm going back to what you just discussed. If, if the contractor has a delay because of weather...
Yeah, mine does.
I don't have an eighteen either.
Do you have a nineteen?
Nope, nope, nope.
I'm blaming the copy machine. I have an eighteen and a nineteen.
You're lucky.
Mine are all stamped in red draft.
Bad news is on eighteen and nineteen, until we get that figured out, we'll let her off.
Copy machine didn't work, neither did she work.
Yeah, yeah. Hope that, I think that's something, things to come, you know?
But we won't need copies of that until next meeting anyway.
Yeah, I'll put, I'll put all the pages in it next time.
That'd be nice.
So you want this back, just put that page in?
You'll, you'll get a fresh copy. On page nineteen that you can't see, this would have the notice to proceed for the engineering portion. The date would be January second of two thousand fifteen. And that coincides again with the SRF application dates. It does not have an ending date on the engineering contract. Okay, the ending date's based upon the ending date of the construction contract.
So when do they actually start? What would be, like, they're thinking for a starting date, sixteen or fifteen or?
Fifteen, we have to do something by fifteen, don't we?
Well, it's sixty. It, if we look at the, the green one again, this is just a real quick kind of overview, but when they talk about that phase one, that is only the disinfection. This is proposing ultraviolet disinfection. So that's as, as the sewage is leaving the plant, it goes through this ultraviolet disinfection. At that point, kills the bacteria, and then it goes to the stream. That, that's proposed that that has to be done by sixteen. Okay, so by springtime, we'll be going through the process of design on, on, on the disinfection. Yep. The other ones, the, the phase two, there really is no timeline on that. Because we're not mandated to be doing any of this stuff. DNR's not coming in and saying, you gotta fix these problems. It's just practical stuff that we know that we need to be addressing because of the, the physical condition of the plant.
So I'm not, I'm not a construction guy or anything here, but Lon, would that be an opportune time then? To tie in that knock and doing some digging and finding that stuff, or is that Russian, that's the Russian?
I think, I think we should look at getting orches down there and saying, how much do you want to dig this stuff out? You know, because I can have tear down the house for four grand. You know, and, and so I think we could do it next spring even, you know? Just go ahead and get it done. We know we want it out of there, so let's just get it done and get it out of there. Just bypass the engineer on this and say, we took it out. You know, we got, uh, roughly four things that we wanna take out. And if you look at the orange that he has up in there, that used to be a dump over there. Now there's a, a sewer line, it, it shows a, a dark, the dark arrow, not the orange arrow, but the dark arrow. That isn't correct, because that line doesn't go that way. It's, where he's got it is where the sewer actually is right now. But it shows an arrow going at an angle, that isn't correct. Because that's where our, our affluent is sucking out of that manhole, right where he's got that orange line, so... If you get out there further, we know that's full of concrete. It's all, that's all buried in there. It's full, but we aren't proposing doing anything out there, so I don't think we need to dig there. You know, and, and I think what's gonna happen, when they put this unit in, there's gonna be a bypass set up to go around that orange line. And, and we're gonna put that concrete structure in there, then they're gonna come back and dig it up, and then they can probably abandon, abandon the bypass. He may wanna leave it there. That's, that's where you get into DNR, whether they, you have to have two of everything, you know? So they might want you to have that line there in case you have to pull out the UV system and work on it that it can go a different way. I mean, that's where it's over my head then. I, I mean, we'll have to wait and see what his plans say.
No, that line goes to the creek, right?
Yeah, yep. It, it goes into that circle, that orange circle there right after the square box, then it goes straight out to the creek.
Uh, will we have to replace that line then?
I don't think we're gonna have to replace that line. In fact, I don't think we have to replace the manhole. But it all depends on whether they say you have to have two, two of everything, you know?
Then you gotta dig through that cement.
Well, I'm thinking, no, I'm thinking the cement is to the west further, maybe fifty feet. So that used to be a dump. When I started down there, that was the dump. And they just kept dumping stuff in, dumped stuff, and then we took the railroad track out and covered it all up. Well, that was a level pad, if you go down there now, you can see where it's actually settled and is dished out in the middle. If you look at the ground, that was a level pad. Klaus had done that, that time for us. It's not level anymore, so it's settling in there.
As, uh, as Aaron and I were talking with, with Bob Beanstra on Friday, we got to talking quite a little bit about the notion, again, about the primary clarifier. And, you know, what's feasible to do as far as, as a potential renovation versus the idea of do we need to just build new construction? Would we, would we build a new, a new clarifier? And then, of course, you can't build a new clarifier, you gotta build two. So, uh, this letter that was at your desk as you arrived, that, this is his response on the issues about that clarifier. And it's some good reading, it really explains things, I think, pretty well about the, the, uh, decisions to be made about this, about this clarifier. And really kinda also lays things out pretty well about how we'll get down the road a little ways, and some of these decisions won't be in our hands anymore. And the DNR has huge impacts about what would be allowed for renovations versus what, when, when new construction would have to take place. Um, one thing that was pretty important that he, that he said in here, that as he's talking about some of these decisions being made by the project manager from the DNR, but as of this date, we do not have a project manager assigned to us. So that, uh, there's no decisions to be made out there quite yet.
So when do they come in and, and put their two senses? How's that, how, I guess, how's that work?
That it is, um, there's consultation that goes on between us as the owner, the engineer, and the DNR. Okay? So, and that's, I really wanna describe it that, that as consultation, not as in mandates and dictates from the DNR about how things are done.
That's, that's one of my concerns is, is that if we get into this project and we wanna do part of it, we're doing it this way, and all of us DNR comes in and says, no, you can't. You know, and then now we gotta change, that's, you see what I was...
I, I think you need a consultation done before you even start, uh, even looking at phase two. So that we know what we can do.
Right, that's, that's, that's one of my concerns.
You mean like, uh, some things we can do on our own versus...
Well, I, my personally, I, and we were gonna talk about this, the mayor and Scott and I talked about today about the primary. I think we can rebuild the primary. I mean, I just had it drained down not that long ago. Structurally, it's in excellent condition, the concrete. Mechanically, we need to do a lot of work mechanically. And if, if you go to, I don't know which one's easier to see. Go to the blue one. You see the white box on the right-hand side at the back of the primary? There's a little white box there, right here. All right, there's an arrow that goes over to the control building. I don't think that, that's not there anymore. I mean, the, the, the pit is there, and I'm hoping the line is there, but we were always told that that was disconnected after they did the last project. Now there's a, still a valve in the basement, although it doesn't work. Maybe it's still hooked up, but we were always told you couldn't use it anymore. But we don't have an as-built set of plans to know. So if we went down into the basement, we know all them valves have to be replaced, that's something we could do. And I can't believe that the DNR is gonna say, no, you have to redo all the piping down there, because it's pretty new piping, it's only fourteen years old. So if we went down and replaced all those valves without an engineer's deal, because we know that, it's just maintenance. I mean, they, we replaced one last Christmas, and well, now we've got two more that won't work. And that, we could find out by pulling that valve, putting water in this pit, whether that's still hooked up in the basement. If it's still hooked up in the basement, I can make that work, then we can mechanically fix... I don't know if you guys remember when we took you down the sewer plant, there's always floatable stuff that comes to the top. Well, there's a skimmer at the end, well, we haven't been able to use that skimmer in fourteen years. Well, of course, now it's all rusted up. Well, could we replace that skimmer? We put a new rail system in it. The chain, I think, is, you know, we just took links out of it, but it's still in good enough shape. They're not wearing through or anything like that. They're not wearing through or anything like that. Replace the flighting, and I'm thinking we can do that for thirty or forty thousand dollars. But after reading Bob's letter that we just got, it says stuff about ventilation in there. We have no ventilation in the primary. So that's where, you know, can we do this? And that's where you, you need the consultant from the DNR to come in and say, hey, if we live on this and this, will this be good enough?
So you don't get gas when you go in there, you wear a mask?
Well, every time you clean it up, you're gonna be sick the next day.
Well, then that's.
But we know, we know that.
Yeah, and then if we know that as a, as a city, we're, we're opening ourselves to so much liability that you even. So that, that, that's, that's, that's.
But then in the same token, I mean, you can go in there on that primary anytime you want. And and I'm not concerned about gas. It's only when you're draining it and working on it, you get down in the pit, you're down in it. I mean, you're in knee-deep crap up to your, you know. Yeah, we shouldn't be doing it. We shouldn't be doing it, but we, we've always done it, so.
It's like.
But it's like shooting, it could happen.
Yeah, well, that's.
You know.
Think about that, that.
That's where you need the ventilation.
You should get some air masks or something, so, so, because that, you're just sitting here now and bringing it to our attention, just open this up even more, because it's on record now, so. So what I'm telling you is that if we're going in there, you need to get some.
Well, you need, you need, when Electric Pump comes, they have two guys. They won't do anything without two guys now, and they always have the monitor. Well, we don't, we don't have the monitor. But, but I'm saying, you know, that renovation stuff could be done by a company. You know, if the DNR would allow.
Right. Let me play devil's advocate, go, we, we had this system set up now, what you're saying, and you said it hasn't worked in the last fourteen years. That's remodeling, how long will that last?
Twenty, twenty years, easy. I mean, the thing was built in seventy-one or four, Scott, something like that?
Seventy.
Seventy, okay.
So it hasn't been.
And, and we just, it was working when we, when they redid the plant. But after they got done, they said, well, that isn't hooked up anymore, you can't use that. See?
So why didn't they hook that up?
Well, I don't have an as-built set of plans to tell you why it ain't hooked up. That's, see, that was always one of the things that, over the years. There's three pits at the end of the pri, at the beginning of the primary. Two of them are completely full of sand because the grit removals never worked. I can only use one of the pits.
How do you get, scoop that up? No.
It just stays in there.
How deep is it? Oh, and just.
Well, the pits are, after you drain the tank, which is about eight foot deep of water, then there's another pit that goes down another three and a half, four foot on a taper. There's three separate pits. See, and that would be my proposal is, we just use the one pit, but we take the sand out of them, smint it up so the, so when the sludge comes down to the end by the scraper system, it flows to that one pit. Because that was one of the things Bob said the other night. Well, you know, that's probably why your scraper system isn't working as well. Because, you know, the, the pit's full of sand. Well, we all know that, I mean, but I, I think there's a way of fixing it, cheaper than a million dollar.
Well, the, the bottom line is, we have to wait for the DNR.
I think you need a consultant to come in and say, hey, if we would fix this, redo our valving in the basement, which we got, we gotta redo the valving regardless. So I don't even think we need a consultant for that. We know we have to have it fixed.
You're talking about somebody coming in to redo the valving.
Oh, yeah, we would hire a company, and not the last company we got. I was just gonna say, you know, I want the company that I don't have to do it.
They were, they were inexpensive.
Yeah, because they didn't do nothing.
They didn't do anything.
They didn't do much, but, but, you know.
You know, I could see having somebody come, because you guys, you know, that's heavy, that's hard work to do.
Well, and I don't mind doing it, it's just the idea that they've got the monitors. And, you know, because we had the whole basement full that night. I mean, we had two inches of crap in the whole basement. You know, and then they left to go home, and we're sitting there with stuff spraying all over the ceiling, so. Barry and I hung a sheet of plastic over, took a sledgehammer and knocked it out and put the new valve in. So that was Christmas Eve.
So if you're thinking about, if you're thinking about maybe some other changes or some tweaking that we can do, should we even sign this yet then?
Yeah, certainly. There's enough latitude within the contract that we're not committing ourselves to do much anything. And time, and timewise, we, we need to.
I'm not saying this is the way we should do it. I'm just saying, this may be a way we could save a million dollars. And I think the public, that's what the public wants.
Absolutely.
I believe that.
And, and it does cost so much to do everything.
Right. So, so do we, do we contact the DNR to get a guy down here to help us with the?
That will be that plan reviewer, and that hasn't been assigned to us yet.
Okay, so, so does he come in before we, uh, the engineer?
No, we would, we would be pitching something to the DNR about this, what we were proposing to them.
Well, we have to do this to get. Scott did bring that up. We would meet, um, we don't have to meet with DNR, but, you know, we could consult by telephone. But Bob would go meet with that DNR person face to face.
Is that a good thing?
That's a good thing. I mean, consultation's a good thing.
I would almost rather talk to the guy first.
Yeah. That's what, that's what I, that's, I guess, the point that I was trying to, trying to get here. Do we want to talk with that DNR guy first before? Because this is all stuff that you were talking about doing before we even.
Or Simon Tansley at the same time.
Well, I, I guess my thing is, is they're gonna lean toward the engineer unless we can persuade him otherwise.
Right.
I think. And there's politics involved, I mean, everybody knows that.
They're, they're looking to cover their ass.
Sure.
By talking to, by talking to the engineer, you're not the engineer, you know what I'm saying, dude?
Yep, right.
Who is your engineer? Lon, well, what's his degree in?
Yeah.
Common sense.
Common sense, yeah. No, but I'm just, you see what I'm saying, that, that's all that's gonna come back to, is that DNR's gonna cover them, cover their bases first by making sure they're talking to the right people. And I'm not saying you're not the right people, but you just will get everybody in the room at the same time and, 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 and put it together. Because what you, what you say, I don't think will have that much weight with it.
No, I don't think so either.
I'm, I'm not, you know, disrespect to you, but I'm just saying they're, they're just looking.
They don't have the paper.
Yeah, there you go, that's, that's what it's about.
I get you.
You know.
But we have to do this to get that SRF loan.
Right, yeah, so we gotta move forward on this.
We gotta plug it away.
We gotta make a step forward.
Yeah, but at least we're, we've got our, we've got an idea what it's gonna cost, and we're granted, we're gonna try to do most of it, at least a lot of money, but it might take some different ideas from all of it.
Well, and if you read this, there is some merit to putting in two new primaries. Because then you fix your effluent through your weir. Uh, you can, we can lower the new primaries down to get the flow that he was talking about last time. Do you remember the conversation when he was standing up here? He said, well, you know, we've added so many things through the years that it's changed the flow through the plant. Well, as I've thought about this over the week and two weeks since that meeting, I'm thinking, that's, that's horse hockey because it only goes through the primary. It goes through the, the weir, or, yeah, through the weir, then through the primary. And then it's pumped everywhere else. So we really haven't added, you know, although we've added the final clarifiers and stuff, it doesn't mean a hill of beans because it goes to this pink pump right here in the middle. And then it's all lifted up from there. And then it gravity flows to the final clarifiers, and then we pump it back through the system again. So when he said that the other night, I, it, you know, it made sense to me first, but as I thought about it, that's not right. It's only going through the primary.
So that's why there's all these questions we get asked.
Yeah.
The thing, the thing as a council that we gotta remember is that we gotta try and make sure this is done right. Because you take a look at what we.
Right, we've got a lot of problems now.
Because it was corners cut, is that, is that a fair assumption?
Yep.
So we've gotta be, we're gonna have to do a lot of asking questions, a lot of, you know, not just agreeing to everything. You know, I think we all do a good job of looking at it, and, and we gotta continue to do it that way. Because like I said, we're gonna invest a lot of money here, and I don't want to come back here in ten years and say, well.
We screwed up.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's the thing that we gotta.
Because I think that already happened.
Yes, it already has.
Clear up the gray areas.
Yeah.
But tonight, we need to approve the contract and the application to the state revolving loan.
Next council meeting. We're just having discussion tonight.
Okay.
I'm hearing only that I'm gonna make one minor change to that, to the contract, and that's to add the location of the effluent sampler.
And then I just have one question about, you know, the part, um, you know, adding the maximum fees for during construction. And, and the typical excuse of construction employment is that it's weather. You know, the weather, you know, wouldn't allow us to finish.
Sure.
So couldn't we ask him also for the same exception? If weather is the reason, if weather is the cause for the construction weren't not to be done on a timely basis?
Okay.
Because that's gonna happen.
We could certainly ask, the, his argument back to us would say, if it's weather-related and they're not working, I'm not working either, I shouldn't be accruing the time. I should still have money left in my budget, even though the project's dragging on further. You know, but we can see what we can do.
Well, rain delays don't count anyway, do they? As a day?
It depends on how we, on how we would have the contract scheduled, whether it's so many working days or it's a hard-ending day.
Yeah, yeah. If you read about that, it says the, the, beyond the contract completion date, so. And nothing ever gets done.
So do we ask for a longer, so you said eighteen months, do we say two years? I mean, does that make sense, or does that, that don't make sense?
I don't think it makes sense.
No, not really, because.
Because then they just drag it on and drag it.
Okay, I'll just try. I'll try to spur one somehow.
Everybody gets spurred on by that ending date, because you gotta have it done by that time.
That's how you smell weather.
So what we do now is get ahold of Orches and see when he can come in.
Well, I think we're really dealing with the grant deal.
Yeah, procedurally, the next council meeting will approve this engineering contract and, and the SRF thing for financing. Um, we, we will talk with Orches here sometime. If Lon had noticed some specific things that could be removed, and we say, well, we want to spend ten thousand dollars now, now to remove that stuff, and it actually saves us quite a bit of money later on.
I really think Orches are gonna be in in the next two weeks to tear down the.
Camp Crescent?
Camp Crescent. So we could visit with them then.
I'm just trying to get it before the frost got too deep.
Oh, well, I was kinda thinking in the spring, we could tear it out anyway, but.
But he might want to do it, give it away.
He might, he might be interested in doing it if they, you know, he's busy.
Big bucket.
Yeah.
He's got a lot of power.
Yeah.
You know, he may want to do it.
Yeah.
You know?
Maybe so. I just want to make sure that we really know what we're doing before we send him on out there to do anything. Don't want to get into making a big old hole out there, and then we're left with nothing but a big old hole.
Yeah.
If there's nothing there, fill it back in, fill it back in. Cosmided a dig hole.
Yeah. Well, Jack, Jack's doing the digging, digging, he probably knows where most of that stuff is. Yeah, Jack would, I'll, I'll bet you Jack could tell you if that, that old drying bag got tore out or if it was just buried. I think it was just buried, but I might be wrong, but I'll bet Jack remembers.
I'm sure it got buried, because, see, at the beginning of the project last time, we approached this thing very much differently than what we are right now because the cost came in, they were too high. And we sat there and started eliminating things about ways to save money. And I would tell you, we, we saved a dime back then and it cost us a dollar now, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's a concern, it really is. I mean, like I said, I.
You know, that was one of the things Bob said too the other day about, uh, uh, whether it's, whether we should do the whole project right away because the cost goes up so much every year. But then you gotta come back and think, well, what if the EPA comes in here in five years and says, that ain't good enough? Then we have to do it again. You know, and.
Well, that's gonna be no matter.
Well, but if we can draw this out as long as you can, you know, I, I think a perfect example is the City Wall Lake. They were supposed to put a new cell in ten years ago, and they still haven't done it because they just kinda keep pushing it and dragging and, and they get by with it. So the longer you can keep this system running, you know, which would I would like to see, you know, it's like every twenty years. Well, we're only at fourteen years right now. So if we went to twenty years, then they come in and said, okay, let's build the next plant for another twenty years. Because it seems like that's what they make you do every twenty years. Well, now we're looking at only, it's been only fourteen years. And we're gonna spend a lot of money that we don't really have.
But we're still spending, we're still spending money to put the Band-Aids on again. That's, that doesn't eliminate, that doesn't eliminate that problem, so.
Yeah, but that, a lot of the Band-Aids are maintenance that needs to be done. It's just something that's, especially the valving. The digester, it, it needs more than Band-Aid.
Tourniquet. Stop the bleeding.
Very good. We will present this again at the next meeting and hopefully be ready for some action.
Do you think of anything more, you know, what I'm saying? I'm just, you know, like I said, the.
Well, I got, I got a, a lot of questions to ask him, and he really don't give you any answers because I've mentioned it one time, and especially that grit removal just irritates me that we spent three hundred thousand and never got to use it.
Well, it's never worked.
And now we're looking at another three hundred thousand, and I'm, I could give B and B down there and fix the dang thing and for eighty thousand dollars.
Let's go bring it in here and put it on the hot seat then, that's, that's, I mean, that's.
Just like an engineer that would give you, when you say, this is what we really want because we know it can work, then you design it to make it to work. Get the velocities and the flows right, and this is how we want it to work. Well, I mean, there's nothing mechanical about the one I wanted to do. They wanted to put in the three hundred thousand dollar unit.
You gotta get it by pocket though.
Well, I know, but that's where you should have an engineer that really is looking at your best interest too.
Right, call the, come to Jesus.
And ease of keeping, keeping sound.
You might write down your questions first before you come.
And then when you get read, just hand it to me and I'll continue.
Well, I don't, you know, you don't want to upset your engineer either, because he can, he can really make it tough then too and say, you know, and make it cost overrun everywhere else. Because I've seen it happen, you get the engineer mad, he's got the inspector hired, he's in, we want it perfect because these guys have been butts. Well, I'm telling you, it happens.
Also tell DNR, don't you think? Don't you think that?
Yeah.
And but I would tell you, we've used Beanster and Kim for several things, and our relationship with them has been as good as it's ever been with any engineering firm. And trust me, things are never perfect. But, because people generally, you know, I don't know if they highly value having to use an engineer for a lot of things. They just think it's expensive and oftentimes results in, in overbuilt things, but. I would certainly advocate for Beanster and Kim, they do have generally done a real nice job for us.
Okay, we'll talk on next time. How about consider payment to Meister for the National Guard training days?
Can you talk about that a little bit, Aaron, and?
Well, Scott and I called Ben Smith because, you know, I, I really didn't know what the laws are or the rules and regulations, but, you know, Ben said, uh, you know, we do, we do owe it, it just came down to trying to figure out the number of hours. And Scott did that, Scott figured that out.
When you look at page twenty-one, I asked John for, to, to give me the days when he was at guard. And really, I only, only needed the days for two thousand thirteen, and I had a, a training schedule for two thousand fourteen. So the dates for two thousand thirteen, um, I did agree with all of those, the number of dates that he, that he listed there, and as far as whether he worked any of those dates. So you see, if there's seventeen days in two thousand thirteen, it's two thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars. In two thousand fourteen, the city did pay him on the twenty-first, so I would certainly argue that's one less day than what he, than what he had proposed. And that's why I wrote. And that's why I wrote down ten. And then the Saturdays, he wrote down eight and according to the schedule, there was only five. So those are, those are my numbers and I need to confirm those with him, but you know, unless he would provide some good documentation as far as what's what. We would go off of the schedule that we had for fourteen. Um, and you look at the total, four thousand two hundred nineteen dollars. If we had to pay all of the dates that he had, that he had written down there, it's five hundred sixty-one dollars more. Um, I guess just like Aaron was saying, you know, it seems like we're obligated to pay this. Um, what we would propose is that the city would pay, uh, and we would turn around and actually just pay him a paycheck. It's a, it is income, subject to taxes. Okay, so, so we would basically pay this as any other income. It's a little bit different. It's not subject to IFRS. But then, you know, it basically treats the guard thing and his police contract that he owes to us, it treats him as two different things. We would pay him an amount and he still owes us the full amount of the police contract, which was ninety-five hundred some dollars.
And he never paid any of that back?
Nope.
So why not?
Pending the resolution of this.
So how much does he pay back for us? How long can you stretch that out?
There's procedures in, in the contract that allow for a monthly payment and the minimum monthly payment's a hundred dollars. At six percent interest.
And you can't just subtract that and have him pay less back?
Again, we wanna, we wanna pay him as payroll.
Cause he can take.
But he's paying us six percent interest?
Yeah, when, when it would start repayment, you know, it would start six percent. I would, I would suggest that we would charge interest from his termination date till now, whenever we have settled, we can go ahead and start any of the interest.
Kenny talked like once he got the dollar mod, he was gonna pay it. That day we had that meeting down here.
Well, I think his boss is gonna pay him for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Kenny sat right here and said that, once we got the number, let him know.
Okay, explain to me, what is exactly what you're paying him for here?
So, um, John Meister, a member of the National Guard.
Right, I get that.
There's a regulation, state regulation that, that says that guard members are entitled to payment for up to thirty days of, of wages during a calendar year. And the, uh, regulation reads a little strange, cause it says it's thirty days of active duty. Okay, we had read that originally to say that if you were ever called up to duty, that we certainly would be liable for, for those thirty days. And, uh, it certainly looks now like active duty is any time that they are called to duty, including weekends and the two weeks during the year. So it can be up to thirty days during that time and, and we were, uh, liable for that amount.
So he was actually being paid by the guards and, and the city at the same time?
Potentially, yeah.
Had we known this law was this way, we would have scheduled him different, but we didn't know it. And he didn't either until just before he left.
And, you know, and actually it, it, it's not that he went away for a weekend and we would pay him for two days. Cause generally what happened was he'd go away for the weekend, go to his training, come home and work a Sunday night shift. So he worked that Sunday night and this is not the total number of days that he was gone. He, you know, we didn't, we're not paying a guard wage for that Sunday. He was paid his regular wage.
So what do you need a motion to do that?
Yeah, I, I do wanna clarify though, that if we, um, do realize that his numbers are right, it's five hundred sixty-one dollars more than what I told you, but.
Are you gonna check into that then, or?
And I, we'll certainly contest, at least that one, if. And we can either make a motion to pay him the, the appropriate amount or we just put it on hold until we know for sure.
We gotta put it on hold.
I think we gotta wait until next month.
That, that's.
Public Works Director report. Did we just have that? There might be some more.
Campgrounds.
Campground.
Campgrounds done. We got some of the gravel in on the road. Didn't get the swing set moved or the monkey bars. Really, we got, we're conceding to do in the spring.
Ground will be softer.
Yeah, yeah, it was pretty hard the other day.
How many do on water meters? I forgot to ask you this.
Uh, what are we, thirty, thirty maybe?
God, I thought it was like sixty-three, but.
No, we've added quite a few here in the last month or so. It might be sixty. I, I'm not really sure to tell you the truth, uh, but I have told the people that haven't got it done, they can't have water next year. Next spring when they come up to use their lake cabin, if it isn't done, I'm, we're gonna shut it off. So they just keep putting us off, putting us off. Hey, we still got maybe three in town that haven't been done. They, some people live in Colorado and stuff, the Chambers is one of them. Well, we got that done actually. But there's still about two or three in town that aren't done. And most of them are out of towners.
Good, that's a good project to get that now. You did a nice job of that so far.
It's, it's been going good.
Good.
That's good. Unless you got something you.
Nope, just this, this interesting, uh, thing about our, our Black Hawk Lake Trail out at Ice House Point. That because of the long, long-eared bat or something like this, we. I don't wanna sound like this, I better have this crap.
Was it a dingbat?
I know a couple of them. I've seen a couple of them.
This would be protecting the northern long-eared bat.
Who wants to protect them?
The, your federal government. So it's one of those, um, yeah, environmental regulations.
Has anybody seen any of those out there?
I've not seen one and I lived there.
Yeah.
We got enough.
As long as he's there as well.
We got enough. Tripped him up a little bit, right?
We got enough on the next two houses north. The chambers?
Oh, really?
Oh, you have to see the side. I just cleaned that all up again the other day. There's, they just hang on that house.
So.
My, I guess my point is that we, due to, we cannot expend federal money to remove trees from April first to September thirtieth. And that is going to be, that's what will be the proposed construction time for the trail. So what we will need to do is get a tree removal contractor of some sort in here and, and have private arrangements with them to actually come take out trees during the winter time.
How many are we talking?
Boy, it's an eighth of a mile. And there's quite a few trees to there.
Hundreds.
Scrub trees, big trees, everything.
That's another deal, Wirtz. They come in there and get it out of there one day.
But. My, uh, my plan is that I gotta, we'll get together with the DNR, discuss that tree removal, cause they will have some different ideas about how things ought to be done. And that, that's kinda the next.
They're gonna flag the trees.
The next thing is that there, there are.
Flagging trees.
And I know there are some trees, for sure, that we'd kinda ask them to do the other thing, flag the trees that they wanna maintain for sure. And otherwise it'd go stake the trail and, and I would suggest we just go, uh, grub out the entire thing and, and it'd be ready. Otherwise, it is conceivable we would bring in a tree guy, have him come in, fell the trees, they could lay there. You just can't cut them down during this April to September time. Um, crazy, but now financially, uh, we can't expend federal money for that. We can expend our, our REAP grant, which we had seventy-five thousand dollars in REAP money that we would use for that. So we, we do have funds, we're just kind of a little money shuffle to make sure we're using REAP funds to pay for this tree removal.
If you remove the tree, cut them down, then you got the stump.
Yes.
So then you gotta come back in and remove the stump.
Well, the, the idea is if you just cut them down and even potentially leave them lay, they're cut down now. The trail construction contract would say grub and clear. And we just may very well just wanna have it grubbed and cleared right now.
It's easier to take the trees and get the stump out when they're all together.
Yes. Or you'll make the bid a lot cheaper too.
So they just got two projects.
But now you, if you cut them low and put dirt over top of them, does that work?
No, you'll never pass the compact if that's done. You're gonna have to grub them out.
No.
Like I say, I don't know how many big trees you, you almost got, like I say, you gotta get the trail defined and then get DNR saying, hey, we're gonna tear these babies out.
Uh, last couple of things are union bargaining, that we would exchange proposals on Monday, December twenty-second and then just propose to stay and bargain.
No problem.
We would need to have, and we will have their opener, say a week or two ahead of time.
Thank you.
And we would be able to craft our response by then and you officially swap them on the twenty-second. Okay, so we would need to be preparing accordingly and have everything ready to go. Uh, last thing, Northwest Iowa League is this Thursday. It's up in La Mar's, if anybody wants to go to La Mar's. You'll be, you'll be far away.
Far away.
Oh, Dustin wanted to talk about your sewer.
Yeah.
I'd kinda like to have you kinda go, I don't wanna do anything that this year, of course, but next year, I think we're missing an opportunity. Uh, I think it was eight thousand dollars you thought it would take for the project. And if we have fifty dollars coming in a month. The eight thou, I mean, if you was looking at a, invested money in something and knew you was gonna get fifty dollars back, you know, after investing eight thousand dollars in ten years, being paid for. And then you got your money back now, the rest of your, rest of the years, you got that sewer line in there, you're getting, still getting that fifty dollars every month.
You think you wanna pay us an extra fifty dollars a month?
No, I mean, between my neighbor and I, uh, and then the price of sewer is gonna go up in the next two or three years. I, I think it's, uh, I think this should be, should be done. It's a moneymaker for the city. And I don't know, but only one other person in the city that don't have sewer and that's one over by Denison Beach.
You just wanna be treated like everybody else?
Yeah.
Okay, what Bob Moore do?
Bob Moore.
Didn't he dial, he went all the way down, hate for himself and then he hooked in our sewer.
Well, he owns that property all the way down there.
I mean, all the way down, he's laying, he does that himself.
That's his property.
Yeah, look, we don't wanna go through your property.
I don't want you to. Just go, just go to it. Just come up to it like all the other places in town have it. They go up to the property of everybody. Plus I think, you know, one of these years, if you wanna extend it out through my property, out to the front, front of my driveway. If the DNR shuts you off from going across the lake, you'd have a place to go. And later on, maybe they, you know, someone else living there won't want you to go across their property.
Food for thought?
Food for thought.
Want some do-adjourn?
Um, can I add one thing? Landfill.
Yeah.
Um, they did survey the existing, um, at our current rate, it'll take us through next August. So we'd have to have transfer station built by next August. And then we're gonna take a trip to go look at a few different transfer stations, uh, today, but the weather kinda deterred him from doing that, so.
I guess I didn't realize this was really a controversial issue and.
It wasn't. You know, it, it depends on how you look at it, you know, the controversy was, you know, amongst a, a few, a few of the members that were there at the meeting. But the, um, transfer station in itself isn't controversial. Everybody knows that it's gonna be, gonna be done. It's just a matter of timing. Doing it now actually saves money in the long run. And, uh, the argument against doing it now was just, um, really not wanting to change yet, I guess, you know, um, so. That was only the contro, the only controversy. It was about it, but it was, it was a five to four vote.
Just don't wanna pull the trigger, some don't.
Yeah, some just didn't wanna pull the trigger.
And this is, this is a done deal. It's.
This is a done deal. I mean.
I don't know. It, it's been a big topic of conversation with SAC City City Council and.
Yeah.
I don't know if anything is coming out of that.
Storm Lake, BV County, go, they take all their stuff to Carroll. Denison, or, um, Ida County takes all their stuff to Cherokee. I mean, all the counties around us.
Are doing something.
Are, are.
Sure.
Doing that to a regional.
Landfill in the state, right?
Yeah, I mean, it just makes dollars sense to get her done now versus waiting. I mean, it, it comes down to dollars and, and if, to me, it's common sense.
You can't use that at all out there, that's closed?
No, it's not closed yet.
Oh, it's not closed yet.
No, and, and it won't be closed. Alls we're doing is, a, a transfer station is, is putting a cap on the, on the landfill and closing that off, building a building where the garbage trucks come in and, you know, we're kinda thinking about a pit where the, we back the semi up in, garbage trucks will come by and dump into that pit in an enclosed building into the truck and then the truck will haul it off to say, for example, Carroll.
Sure.
Okay. One of the good things that comes about, out about it is like on a day like today, the, the landfill could be closed because of the high wind, weather or whatever, where if it's in a, in a closed building, you know, it's gonna be open all the time. Which is gonna be nicer for people using the landfill. Because, you know, you're not always looking at the, uh, maximum, uh, weather when you wanna use the land. Nice weather and stuff when you wanna use the landfill, so, you know, that's gonna be one good thing that's gonna come out of it also, so.
Just one specific question about how they handle construction waste out of that then?
That, uh, construction waste, one of the things that's been tossed around is if you have a, um, house to tear down in Lakeview and let's say for example, Carroll is the place we're gonna take it, uh, we'll ship it right to Carroll instead of taking it out there and dumping it and, and stuff and then.
They just won't take it up there.
We just wouldn't take it up there. We'd just do it direct.
Very good.
Cost goes to the owner instead of.
This house that burnt down over here.
Yes.
Guy next door asked me if I'd tear it down for him and I said, no. I said, you get Wirtz to do it. I said, he'll have it out of there in two or three hours, you know? And, uh, he's trying to get it bought. He said, if I can get it bought right, why?
Yeah, so the neighbor came and saw me, said that he has purchased it, Jason.
Oh, he has.
He's finalizing it with the bank and everything, but, uh, but he has, he has purchased it. Certainly intends to get it out of there as quickly as feasible. Doesn't intend to do anything with it, would just have extra open space next to his house and, uh.
If Wirtz is coming in here, maybe you wanna get ahold of him and just have.
That's what we were, we were talking about. We knew Wirtz was coming back to town, so.
Call Weber too.
God, every town needs a.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Is your arm getting sore?
Why do you second it?
Yeah.